That's an interesting one. It's always solutions for disposal from Parks Department.
I questioned that myself.
Yeah, I did too.
I was gonna... you've been around longer, so do we normally get those for trash for parks?
No.
Programs?
That should be submitted to that.
Why did they send that to us? They sent it to us. Send it back? Question it?
Question it.
That should be under Parks.
Yeah, because I was wondering if there's like... I know that we take care of the regular trash for the town, but I didn't think... Like I told her, I don't... I mean, I haven't heard anything about it. I haven't seen anything of it, so...
It's something we'd have to question them on.
Yeah.
Is that Sue Ramsey?
If there's any contract or... I don't know. But yeah.
So check with Sue Ramsey on that?
Yeah.
Check with him.
Sue Ramsey.
Do you want to prove them all except for that one?
Good. I would've thought if anything, then from the Parks Department would've been under Bordezt.
I don't know what that is. Isn't there water potty up there? Could that be... I don't know. Well, that'd be slims, never mind. I don't know what it is.
Do we know who's in charge of Parks Department? Stan, who's in charge of the Parks Department?
Isn't it Sue Ramsey?
I believe so.
Sue Ramsey.
Excuse me. I believe it's Sue Ramsey.
Sue Ramsey, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's find out what happened there.
All right. I'll send her an email.
You're gonna send her an email?
Yep.
Hmm? No.
No?
No.
Okay, there's one. There was one.
Mark.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so I'm gonna make a motion to accept the pills and payroll for October 25th, 2021.
Can I second the motion?
Motion made, second, all in favor, aye?
Aye. With the exception of that one.
Yeah. A little check mark there.
Yeah, I better write it down here. Check with her.
And to approve the meeting, the meeting minutes for 9/16/2021. I make a motion to approve the minutes for the meeting of 9/16/2021. So here's second.
I second the motion.
Motion made, second, all in favor. Aye?
Aye.
Aye. And then to confirm the next Board of Health meeting date and time for November 18th. Anybody that got a problem with that?
None of it.
And I make a motion to accept November 18th, the next Board of Health meeting.
On clock?
5:00 P.M.
5:00 P.M. Are you guys got anything on our agenda?
I hope so.
Or we need to find out this position.
Um, we've been waiting for four weeks now to get a person to witness a perk so we can get our leach field done.
Okay.
And we... our house is, um... It's sold and it's...
It's under contract right now, so we just need to find out who that person's gonna be.
They haven't showed up yet.
Is she coming?
They're supposed to be here today, so we gotta...
That's why we're here.
She was interested.
Okay.
Yep, so, um, we haven't had anybody in the office. And I didn't realize... I had no communication from you. I didn't have a voicemail or an email, so I didn't even know.
I've been speaking with her, so I didn't...
I know, but I'm in the office normally, so I get the emails. I have Brianna.
Brianna, so Alex has been in touch with you.
Yeah.
He's the one that's been doing...
So typically, when the application comes in, I let, uh, the gentleman know that did it, that was on our board. And he would take it from there, and I had nothing to do with it. I didn't know that he hadn't contacted you guys, so I'm sorry about that. I just, I didn't know.
We just need to know what to do now.
So we do have somebody coming in tonight that is hopefully, uh, ready to accept the position. Uh, and the board agrees, then we'll have somebody. I don't know how fast she is ready to hit the ground and get running. That's a conversation we're gonna have to have.
Yeah, we're hoping for tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
I don't, I don't know. I mean, everything is done in the office.
Again, our closing is the 30th, and you have to have the leach field done.
November 30th, not October 30th.
Oof.
Yeah.
So yeah, so we're really on the edge.
Sure, you gotta get it moving.
Right, we gotta get it moving soon.
I mean, we don't want anything worse to happen. You know, we... It's at the end of life, we know that. And you gotta get it done before our septic's okay. And we don't want it backing up and having all kinds of problems.
We just wanna get it done.
Yeah. So normally those things, we don't schedule those. It's all up to the agent that does it. So as soon as she comes in, she knows we've got a pile of it on the table. She knows if she accepts it, she's walking into a bunch. So I told, there's another gentleman I talked to yesterday. As soon as we figure out what, where she stands, then call everybody on Monday. We're closed tomorrow, so...
Fair enough.
I can update you on Monday unless you wanna hang out a little longer. She should be here.
Yeah, again, you know, we just wanna show her how important this is to us. So, you know, maybe she... Hopefully, we'll better get to the top of the list, so...
And we don't want Alex to get all booked up and not be able to...
Oh, she's been sending emails out to several people. She either didn't get answers back, or it wasn't what we needed. So she had to wait to get information back. I was doing research to find somebody, and...
Do you want to take her email address?
Well, I have the number on the application. You guys have your phone number on there, right?
I'm not sure, 'cause Alex took care of all that for us and paid for it.
I recognize your name, your number's on there. Worst case, I can call Alex. You give me your number and email right now, too.
Yep, it's 413-668-6648.
So also normally, um, I do know that the agent will normally schedule with the contractor, too. So he might, or she might reach you also, but...
He said so far he hasn't gotten any calls, so me and him better just keep in touch.
You wanna hear it?
Yeah, and it's Colleen Gauthier, C.O.L.L.E.E.N.G.O.G.A.U.T.H.I.E.R. Number 18 at gmail dot com.
I'm gonna call, 'cause it's quicker. If I can't reach you by phone, then I'll send you an email.
Okay. So are you basically saying we don't need to hang around here then?
I mean, if you want to, to see what this is up to, then you can. But, um, you know, worst case, you get antsy, you don't wanna hang out. I will reach out to you Monday and update you. Whether it's good news, bad news, whatever, I'll let you know Monday, okay?
So then this holding would be complete? By sign down? You got anything more in there?
Just making sure. My frame is like gel though.
Check to see if there's anything I need to sign, 'cause I don't...
I need you guys to sign this. So this is for Tony Woodman. This is somebody that's also doing a septic, but he... His permit was expired, so we already have his insurance. We've had his recommendations in the past.
So it's just renewing it?
Yeah. He can't move on that until that's approved. Okay, that's a rooster complaint, Don.
Those roosters, boy, I'll tell ya. They've had a heck of a year to share.
What in the freezer?
I guess I'm not sure.
Can you believe it? This, this rooster starts early and goes all day. Have you seen this one yet?
I think this is a continuing complaint. Brianna? Is this a continuing complaint?
That's a new one. Um, well, that's one that we had a couple weeks ago.
Okay.
186 Main Street. Put that right on the other side of the road. I was hearing, it came in the room.
Just bring your name over here. Is this Chrissy?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Hi, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you, too.
Brianna. Thanks for coming.
Sure. Yeah, I was like, oh, no, we're gonna be here anyway.
Is that the one complaining? Trying to get the picture to come out. That's the one that's complaining.
What the heck? That's a new one, then.
So does it list an address? For...
For the rooster?
Yeah.
No.
Oh, you know what? I have... There was a flurry of emails going back and forth with him and the selectmen. Maybe that's why it seems older to you, 'cause you follow it. That was... It was directed to us at the tail end of it. I didn't print out the whole slew. I just wanted a reminder, so...
Okay. What do we wanna do about a rooster complaint?
I don't know, just yet.
I don't know where to begin.
Let's see how many roosters. Maybe there's more than one.
Yeah.
Brianna, do you remember the nuisance? Paperwork that we found with roosters?
Well, those were the animal regulations that I started to chase, but then we put it aside because it was... I need to know how far to go with it.
Yep.
Because I can, I can go and go and go, but then the board has to be ready to make sure that everybody in town is following the same rules. And then how do you limit somebody to have chickens? How do you not? I mean, I don't know. That was kinda where the conversation ended up. I still have all of that stuff, but Ken used to talk about the nuisance. The nuisance law, nuisance regulation, and the CMRs. Now, that might be something worth looking into. I don't know.
Um, can you get those out for me? When you get a chance?
The nuisance one? The one that's impacted?
Yeah, so I can review them?
I almost brought up the board, the big book. It's in that big book down there. I'll flag it. Actually, I think it's already flagged.
Okay.
And they're adapted.
Yeah, that'll... That'll go there. Hello?
Hi.
Who you guys are?
Um, I'm Chrissy. I'm actually the health agent from Palmer.
Good to meet you.
You're welcome.
We've been waiting for you.
There's others waiting for you.
Yeah, was that them?
Yes.
Thank you for showing up.
So why don't we go there? Don't know where to begin, like, congratulations. Thank you for coming. And welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Um, do you have any questions for us, or...
Um, so I know when I was talking to Brianna, she said you guys had some stuff that hasn't been approved yet, needs to be scheduled. We had gone back and forth about, like, what the fees for service would be. And then I don't know how you guys pay, like, W-2s, 1099s, I mean, like, all that stuff. So I wasn't really sure, like...
I guess that's a question I still have to find out myself. Uh, I know if you, you know, you guys all agree and you're appointed, I'll send a mass email out to everybody, and I'll probably have to get you in touch with the treasurer, 'cause she's the one that does all the paperwork for us for them. Um, so we're closed tomorrow. So I guess...
Monday.
Yeah. I could probably email you the forms, I guess. I don't know if it's 1099 or W-2, but I'll figure that out later for you.
Okay.
We even also talked about the fees. So that's something that you guys are gonna have to talk about. Maybe vote on changing the percentages for that.
Oh, absolutely.
Yes.
Everything's going up.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so it was, it was 80/20, 80 to Chrissy, 20 to the town for septic, and then 75 to Chrissy, 25 to the town for perk. That leaves her getting 150 and 150, um, for septic and perk.
Is she satisfied with that, Chrissy?
Yeah, that would be fine.
Cool.
Um, so I'm assuming you and I'll come up with a process. Like, obviously, I'm not gonna schedule anything until I'm paid or ready to go, kind of thing. And then I'm assuming I'll just... I do this for Westbrook Field, too. So I usually just pick up the plans from them, schedule the perks on the side, and bring the stuff back to you guys. So usually, they need to sip in three to four copies. One that I get to keep, one that you guys get to keep, and one that goes back to them or the building, I'm not sure. So every town has a little bit different, but so I'm thinking we should probably just tell them four copies right off the rip. That way, you guys keep... Yeah, one for you guys, one for building, one for me, and one back to the homeowner. So maybe just make it four.
Okay.
And you do perk testing us as well?
And I checked them out.
Your number one customer.
We've been waiting four weeks.
They're in a real hurry.
For somebody, yeah. We have our house sold, and our closing's the 30th, so we're...
I don't remember.
Okay. I was like, oh my god, like...
No, 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 no.
Okay. Sorry. So if you go through the process with Brianna and everything's paid, then we can...
Yeah, everything's all set. And she has, um, the person that is doing it for you.
Okay.
Yeah, so I have... Their check is all set. It's already gone through. Their application's paid and full. I didn't realize that, um... I didn't realize it wasn't scheduled for them already.
Okay.
So, yeah, like I said to you on the phone, we've got a lot of backup down there. I think at this point, actually wrote it down for you. We are at, um... We're at four septics and two perks.
Okay.
So there's a pile down there for you.
Okay.
No way, it's just been thrown out of our building yet.
Um, that's fine. Um, so who is your engineer or your excavator?
Um, it's Alex at... You have the paper?
I can scan the perk over and send it to you if you want before I leave tonight.
Yeah, you can text me all of that stuff. But so, um, because I work for Palmer, Monday through Thursday, typically I do this stuff on Fridays, Saturdays, night times for things in the mornings, like... So, but obviously, try and get your stuff in as quickly as possible would be fine.
What media?
Would be great.
I actually would be out this way tomorrow.
Need the address?
I can do it myself, but I would need someone to witness.
So it's Alex at Blue Ridge Escavation.
Oh, okay. I actually just licensed them in Palmer, like, just recently.
It is happening for a reason.
Yeah, sometimes.
Awesome. Thank you for coming here today.
I need you guys to...
I'll second that.
Um, what is your name? What I'll do is I'll text him and let him know that you're gonna be... Would it be you?
Or he would actually need to contact me.
Okay.
So make the way. I'll make the motion.
And it's Chrissy?
Chrissy.
C?
C-H-R-I-S-S-Y.
Chrissy, we're gonna have to make a motion to appoint you. Do you just go by Chrissy, or is there... Are you a corporation, or Chrissy will work?
Oh, Chrissy, or my name is actually Christina, but everyone calls me Chrissy, so...
Okay.
And my last name is Florence. You probably knew that, too.
Chrissy Florence. F-L-O-R.
I make a motion to accept Chrissy as... To appoint Chrissy as our Septic System Inspector and... I know there's more than perk testers.
Usually saying, it usually does Title V Agent.
Title, Title V Agent, thank you.
I have some chicken and rooster regulations, too, if you'd like them.
Oh, we even...
Some what? I have some, um, animal regulations, um, that I can send you that went through here and are enforceable over where we are. And it has a whole section about chickens and roosters, if you'd like.
For Palmer?
Yeah. I went around, I got all the surrounding towns as far out as Amherst, actually, and even some on the Cape.
I need to second on that motion.
I second the motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So I do have...
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
And we have to vote on... We have to make a motion to vote on that.
Your number, Chrissy.
Got to pay him out of money, too?
58.
Yeah, because the page ain't... It's changing.
612?
Yeah.
And the treasurer may come in.
Do we need a motion on?
I think that it would be better to. I mean, I don't know. But yeah, you probably should.
How we gonna work this? Make a motion to, um...
You're changing it from 50/50 to 80/20 and 70/25. 80/20.
I make a motion to change the pay scale from 50/50 to 80/20 for the Title V Inspector. We have a second.
I second the motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion made, second.
You're welcome.
Paying street, follow up.
So I guess I want to come...
Follow up with the pay concern.
Yeah, what we got there? Follow up on pay concern.
Yeah, we'll be in contact. I'll, I'll text you tonight their, their information. And get ahold of you Monday so we can figure out, uh, the treasurer stuff to get you paid. And, yeah, in contact.
If you want, I can meet you at some point tomorrow, or since I'll be out this way. Like, it doesn't have to be... I don't know where you live, but I could always meet you.
I live right down the road, but I am a full-time student, so I'm gone during the day.
Gotcha.
I can be here really early in the morning, or I can be here, um, tomorrow. Around 4:00. I don't know where you're in the area.
Well, we can coordinate some things. I can get all the grants from you.
Okay.
Obviously, if you have a backlog, it's not fair to all these people waiting.
Right.
What do you need to coordinate?
Um, so she can get a copy of all the stuff down there.
'Cause I work in Palmer.
Oh, do you?
Yeah. I work for McCarthy, backed up behind the, um... Oh, the big plant there where everybody's got a place. Maple, the Maple.
Oh, Maple Tree Thomas. I live around that, right around the corner.
Is that right?
Yeah.
So I can get, I can get close to you then. Get something down there for you if you need it.
I did make copies of all the perks tonight, but... I can make copies of the applications. I guess, I don't know what we would do about the plan. I guess I could just give you the plan for now and just... There are backups in there. We, we take three plans, so... I don't know.
I'm free anytime.
Okay.
So if you need somebody to meet you, I can get it to you.
If you guys wanna just hide amongst yourselves, I could meet someone tomorrow and at least get the stuff from you. Um, and then going forward, we'll just get four. So that way, there, there's one that I can just take to have, 'cause I need it for the field anyway, to make sure that they actually put in what they drew.
So for the ones that have already come in for septic, you'll get... I'll just, if I hand you, you know, make a copy of the application, but I give you the three designs to a stamp, and then a copy of the application, would one of them be able to make it back here so I could file it at the end of it all?
So what I would do is, um, I would leave you with all of them, and I'll just take one, and I'll approve them, and then I'll sign the permit, and then just send the signed permit back to you. So that way, you keep everything in the office, and it doesn't leave the office. It's just the one I'll take with me.
So then I'm gonna get this stack ready after our meeting tonight.
Okay.
And I'm going to give... Can I give you...
Yeah, that's totally mine. You couldn't give them my number, but...
Maybe you'll be in Warren that driving while she's in Warren tomorrow, too, in the area. Or maybe when you go to Palmer, she'll be in Palmer, you know?
If you guys can work out the logistics, I'll be the gopher. No worries.
All right. Okay. I'm gonna get the packet ready tonight.
Okay.
And I will get you guys perked within like the next week or so.
That'd be awesome.
That'd be awesome. Like I said, I don't mind the weekends.
Now we can let the, the poor new owners know that. It's getting...
They can breathe.
Right.
Okay.
You don't work weekends?
Um, well... Then don't ask him. It's made a little...
I just carry the water drugs.
Bye, guys.
Then we're off then.
Yeah, I would message him, but we don't have service, so I'll do it as soon as we get it.
Yeah, thank you very much, guys.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for your time.
You're welcome. Thanks for your patience.
Not a problem.
Okay.
If, I've... Are we...
Yeah, I mean, you're all set.
Chrissy, thank you very much. Unless you wanna stay on board and listen to the rest of that. The idiots throwing at us here.
If you have what quirky stuff you need regulations for, let me know. I may have something for you. But the rooster one is interesting, 'cause we don't... We allow roosters, but if they become too noisy, there's like stuff that they can take. They actually have collars that you can put on them that make it like... And they're humane collars as well. Yeah, that actually make them stop prowling.
You mean like the, the don't bark dog thing?
Yeah, it's kinda like that, but they're for roosters.
Really, for a rooster?
Yeah, because of how much they scream all the time. And there's also something you can do with them, with putting them, and when you put them in the house, you black box them. So it's, and again, everything is humane, so there's nothing mean or punishing about it. But it has to do with how you separate them between the two. We went through this, um, a lot, so that's why I have rooster regulations.
I would've thought there would've been some kind of bylaw for being in, in the general populated area, that you can't have something like that, but there is nothing else.
So some communities are right to farm and some are not. So Palmer was not a right to farm community, whereas Lake Belch Town is a right to farm community. So what we did was we took, and anyone who has two acres or less needs to conform to setbacks in the regulations that are in the packet. Anyone with two acres or more is free to do what they choose. However, once there's a complaint, they have to come into full compliance with the packet of regulations. So it is still right to farm, but it just limits, like, your downtown areas where the houses are on top of each other. You can't just put a pack of chickens in there, like, 'cause it's just not fair.
That's exactly what we got happening.
So, um, so that might be very helpful to you. But you do have to go to public hearing with it and all of that stuff before you can bring them in. But it's... It, it works, because then you have something enforceable.
Great. We appreciate that very, very much.
I'm just gonna stop taking over everything and just leave now.
Thank you so much.
You too.
Hey, Mike, but, um, why don't we take care of you next? All right, so, um... Let's see what you got.
All righty. Thank you for the board hearing me. So the last meeting, when I was here, um, I was not on the agenda, but there was discussion, and Ken had agreed it would be something that we'd look into. So what was... So what had transpired then is, is that the board had agreed that someone, either himself or Brianna, would contact the DEP. And it turns out, so I've since called them twice, and nobody has contacted them from the last meeting that we had. So they were still waiting for somebody from the board to call them. And what that was about was because the, uh... I have to say, Tricia cannot inspect any type of, whatever...
Industrial.
Industrial stuff. So, but DEP did acknowledge that they can reopen the complaint, but it would have to be a request from the Board of Health.
So, stop there for a second. So there was a complaint that's been closed, then?
Well, the... Yes, correct. There's a complaint that... Yeah, for what we're here, for, for tonight, yes. There's a complaint that was opened by a resident, and it was closed, yes.
It was closed.
So they can reopen it, right? And I'm gonna discuss that complaint, 'cause I have a copy of the complaint here, so... So, so if you wanna, I'll go into this. So the issue is, um, 600 Old West Warren Road. So back... So I have two... So this is the evidence that I'm gonna turn over to the board. I'll explain it, and then I'll... I only printed one copy, so I'll just go over it, and then I'll turn it over. So back in... So it was Derek believes as a private citizen, who was also on the Warren Planning Board at the time, had filed a complaint to DEP on 5/17/2016. And the complaint at that point in time was 600 Old West Warren Road. And the complaint was... I'm just reading what it said. So the complaint was concerned about stormwater runoff from a proposed expansion of Fegel's Auto Savage Yard on Old West Warren Road, was also concerned about the size of the operation. So what happened is the complaint was opened by the DEP, but it was closed then because, um... Because an employee of the planning board then called the DEP after Derek made the complaint and closed the complaint out. So Derek opened the complaint, but a planning board member got involved and then called them to close out the complaint. And said that the town... Well, I'll read what they wrote. So it says, "Refer the complainant to the local planning board." Now, the issue with that is Derek's on the planning board, and it turns out it was the chairman of the planning board who actually called, went above Derek's head, and closed out the complaint. Uh, and then supposedly, they were... I'm sorry?
Is that part on paper?
Uh, I got that directly from the... From Catherine. She's the one that, uh, received the complaint and acknowledged that Bill Ramsey had called and closed it out.
But it's not on paper from you?
It's not on this paper, no. But I did call him, they did, they did say... I did ask him why they didn't put his name in here. So then they also said that was referred to the local planning board, ZVA, which is incorrect, 'cause the zoning board of appeals only does appeals on zoning issues. They're not, they don't enforce any environmental things. And the conservation... They're not, they don't enforce any environmental things and the conservation commission. So I did inquire not to the ZBA, since they don't have any authority in that. The conservation commission has no record of any of this, knowing this at all. Then it says, reported to the local planning board and the complaint, the DEP had supposedly inspected the site in 2015, which was prior to this complaint and issued an N O N and R T C following corrective actions to be taken, recommend Mr. Fijil contact Conservation Commission. Planning Board stated a con con and signed off on the project, referred to local authorities. So the, so when I spoke to the DEP specifically on the phone regarding this piece of paper, they had said, oh, well, the town handled all the issues. So I inquired to the planning board and to the conservation commission and no taxpayer money, nothing with the selectmen's office, nothing with any town board ever did anything with this complaint. So all that time, the DEP thought that the town had resolved the complaint and then I was the one that told them that, no, the town never did anything with the complaint. And then they said, oh, we were lied to the whole time. And I said, that's correct. So where this has connection is, uh, these are the meeting minutes of the planning board, which I will turn over to you. And it turns out the meeting minutes actually explain more than this piece of paper does. So briefly, uh, on March twenty eighth, two thousand sixteen, there were concerns that were in the planning board meeting minutes that were discussed about environmental concerns there. And then March thirty, two thousand sixteen, um, there was more concerns, including issues that they were able to prove that private wells in the local areas were all contaminated with, it says allowable drinking water, one to four dioxide in the property is located. So it's in the meeting that it's more up with this public discussion, they acknowledged that there was contamination at that address. April eleventh, two thousand sixteen, they addressed more issues and concerns about scrap cars, contamination to the house at six hundred O S Warren Road. May two, two thousand sixteen, they discussed it again. And May sixteen, two thousand sixteen, uh, more stuff came out. Mr. Belize requested to address the board. According to his calculations, approximately a hundred and forty thousand square feet of deforestation had taken place. And then in one handout, the graphics displayed coastal one point five million gallons of water runoff during a hundred year flood and the potential damage that could be done. Mr. Belize further expressed concern over the contamination of surrounding water and the cutting of trees. All the handouts have a banner along the bottom that is titled site analysis prepared for the planning board. Following meeting after that, we go to May twenty three, two thousand sixteen. It turns out, oh, this must've been after this was closed though, yeah, cause that's five seventeen, two thousand sixteen. So on May twenty third, it said, uh, the board has been deliberating the merits of this application after discussing regarding orders of conditions. Uh, they were, they created a draft decision for review. After final discussion review of the draft, a motion was made to grant the special permit to operate a junkyard automobile graveyard with conditions made by Ms. Libby. So the reason why this all has relevance and chronological order is we have them discussing that there's contamination on the property. We have a complaint by Derek Belize here on five seventeen. And then they basically, there's no evidence that the town was involved in any cleanup of this. There's no, uh, also no indication in any of the, in two thousand sixteen that planning board members who publicly discussed the contamination of six hundred Warren Road notified the planning board, the selectmen's office, town council, nothing. It was just basically in the town records and then nobody further discussed it. And the chairman is the one who closed out the complaint. So on May twenty third, he then, um, they, he was one who, he was listed as making a motion to grant the permit, knowing that, that a week ago you had, you had contamination issues. And then on June twenty, two thousand sixteen, um, then there was also additional discussion where, um, that Mr., that there was a heated discussion between Mr. Fijil and the planning board and, uh, and it turns out Mr. Belize did acknowledge that he was the one who in fact contacted DEP with environmental concerns. So just to, so just to jump forward here, so this contamination issue of this property was under Mr. Fijil at the time. So now moving actually to Monday night's planning board meeting, which I, I don't have to show you the videos, but anyhow, so we have two separate issues now. On twice, so on, on the, the public videos, we have on December twenty eighth, two thousand twenty, we, there was a planning board public hearing for B H T, which was for seven twenty seven Brimfield Road. And the planning board members publicly admitted that there, that when they had visited Copart and met with the general manager, that they witnessed dozens of cars leaking fluids into the ground and had conversations with the Copart manager and who confirmed that, yes, they do, there is, uh, environmental issues up there and nothing has been rectified. Uh, there, so, so the planning board again, which, which just to clarify for everybody here, this planning board from two thousand sixteen was one set of people and now we have a new set of people, including Derek is the only one that's still connected to both. So on December twenty eighth, two thousand twenty, we have an entire new planning board, including Derek. Now, public admissions that there's contamination at Copart because they had purchased the property in two thousand nineteen. And then just this Monday, on October twenty fifth, I have timestamps of them, of David De Friends now addressing Copart in a public hearing, saying that the town is gonna have to pay for potential cleanup from all the damage. They also received, uh, apparently six or so or a dozen pictures of residents that had provided that there was contamination from rainwater coming down the street. Uh, and then they also during, for it looks like three minutes discussed that they witnessed Copart fluids coming out of vehicles. And that they, and then they also addressed on these timestamps that I wrote down, that they had gone there for a site walk and that's where the admission of Copart were acknowledged directly to the, to the planning board members at that point in time, that there was contamination. So to generalize what I just said is Copart, um, has had roughly several thousand vehicles there at a time. So we're not talking about four or five hundred vehicles, we're talking two to three thousand vehicles. And what is now in confusion is I have addressed the, this issue with the planning board, the current planning board that is, and have said to them, I'm totally confused. We have contamination that dates back to two thousand sixteen, that has been going on for five to seven years at this point in time, prior to two thousand sixteen. And then now we have a contamination issue with the new owner, which is Copart, but it's all shares the same address. So that's what I addressed with the planning board is you have two separate issues of known contamination over all these years. And again, I asked the planning board recently, why have you still not gone to the Board of Health to explain anything? Uh, they've admitted they have not, again, this is the new planning board, still not caught, well, unfortunately, three of the planning board members are the selectmen, so they admitted that they didn't contact the selectmen. They haven't talked to town council. The last time I was here at your board meeting, there was no communication for the past eight years to ten years of any of this stuff directly to the Board of Health. And again, now, and then, so now we have David De Friends, who's vice chair of the planning board, talking about, because there's a, uh, expansion project going on where they wanted to add several thousand more cars up there. So, and then that's why the board is discussing six hundred O S Warren Road currently as of just this past Monday. And so there's an admission from town officials that, right, eventually if the contamination starts contaminating all the neighborhood properties, the town would be responsible for millions of dollars in cleanup. So that's what I wanted, so this is all what I wanted to relay to Ken last month. And what angers me the most is nothing personal against anybody here, nothing personal against the planning board, nothing personal against Mr. Fijil, but there was obvious in the town's own records, in the DEP records, that there's been many years of contamination and nobody from the town has done anything to fix it. When I talked to the DEP on the phone, all their answer was, oh, the town straightened it out. And I said, no, that's not true. And I provided them, uh, you know, I didn't give them any video footage, but I basically explained why I explained you and they realized that they've been duped. Is the town officials called them and said, oh, the town straightened it out. So DEP closed up the complaint based on what they told them. So, um, so to me, that makes other town officials completely grossly negligent in this contamination problem because somebody should've said something. So, so I guess that's pretty much the gist of it, what I.
That's a big gist.
I know it's a big gist, I was just trying to explain this in the shortest version that I could, so.
What I gotta add, Mike, is that this is still floating around out there in the planning board between selectmen and possibly I'm gonna float to their, to our town, town lawyer there. So I'm not gonna open up another can of worms here, but they'll float around out there until the dust settles.
Yeah.
And then we'll see what we got.
Okay. The only thing I don't know is, I don't know if the planning board is talking to town council or not. And if they are, it turns out they don't use the same town council that, that this board would use, cause they just, just a month or two ago signed to a totally separate one because they were having conflicts. Because if the planning board shares something and then they put on their selectman hat, they're talking to the same individual. So they decided, well, in order to avoid an ethical motion, we should get a totally entity, total separate entity town council. So apparently that is the case. So the issue.
And then we have a complaint that's been closed, correct? A complaint that's been closed and we're looking to reopen this complaint.
Well, the reason why I, I personally think it should be reopened is because Tricia cannot go up and inspect it because she's not authorized, as we discussed in the last meeting. So it was Mr. Lacy that had said, well, if we contact DEP, and I contacted DEP prior to that meeting and they said, sure, we'll go out and inspect it, but they just can't have a citizen calling them saying, hey, you were lied to, you should go out and inspect it. They said the Board of Health needs to call us and say, you know, we'd like for you to go back and inspect this. And they should be turned over, cause I can do a records request tomorrow and get the pictures that the planning board just discussed from the residents of all the chemicals coming down from six hundred O S Warren Road. And that's why.
Fijil's, Fijil's has been there for over twenty years. They, I'm sure there was, there's no doubt about it.
Correct, yes. But it turns out, my also public records request found out that he only got a permit five years ago. So he's been there for thirteen years without a single permit from any of the town.
That is something that's gotta go up against a selectman, not this department.
Well, that issue, that is, that is, well, that is, well, that permit issue is nothing to do with this board or me, right? If they didn't, if they waited thirteen years later to give him a permit, that's something between the town and them. But I'm only just here addressing the, the contamination issue, which should be avoided health issue. And Ken seemed to agree with that at that meeting. Cause Ken said, well, gee, I wasn't made aware of this at all, so.
The original complaint, put in. Ken asked him for the original complaint.
So whenever I get an opportunity to talk to Ken, I'll see how he's moved on it.
Right. So I missed the first one or two minutes of the meeting, so my, so I, cause I was downstairs and I didn't come up. So is Ken still legally here or not legally here?
We're looking for his resignation.
Okay.
And, um, at this point in time, since we don't have it, it's a limbo thing.
Okay.
He took it on, he took it upon himself. He's, he said he was going, according to you, he was gonna talk to DEP.
Well, I don't know who was gonna call.
Oh.
Right, right. I don't think he specifically said, um, he was going to call, right? It is my understanding that he would, it's my understanding that he was, he is, he was the chairman and that he was going to have a conversation with Brianna, either say, is Mr. Burrow got us the paperwork, whatever, and have Brianna call, or he was gonna call us saying, hi, I'm chairman of the Board of Health.
Yeah.
I'm calling you guys in this complaint, but I didn't have this piece of paper when the last time I was here. And Ken did say, oh yeah, come back the next meeting, we'll put you on the agenda. And that's what the purpose of this was. So, so now you have the piece of paper and so somebody should certainly, I would think, from the Board of Health, reach out to Mr. Belize, since he's the one that filed the complaint. And, and someone should call DEP and say, we're from the Board of Health, we wanna reopen this complaint. And then they would in turn be communicating with the board. So whether they come, whether they would inspect on their own, whether they would say, we're gonna go inspect on this date and we want the Board of Health to come with us.
So we've got people up there that.
Right. And I've called the DEP, they've been waiting for a phone call since the last meeting and they're pretty upset because they, they feel like they're being blown off by the board. But as I said, please don't take that personally, it's just because there was nothing happening from the last meeting till today. So, thank you.
Okay. Um, that's where I'm gonna go.
Okay, and this is your paperwork.
Just going to table it until we talk to Ken.
Can I ask a couple of questions?
Go.
This is yours to keep. And you can make copies of that, so that's the official copy I'm turning over to.
Mike, are your concerns mostly related to the stormwater runoff right now? So, I mean, it sounds like that was what the original complaint was about and the, the pictures that you have and the things you mentioned were primarily related to stormwater runoff right now.
Well, it turns out, I don't have any, my, I don't have any pictures of six hundred O S Warren Road. That's all, we, the planning board, the planning board just produced public records that were pictures that they got from residents of all sorts and chemicals coming, including oil coming down the river, uh, and then, right, they admitted that they.
On the meeting, did they show the pictures or did they just like?
Not to the public, they were passing them around. It's on video that they have the pictures and they've had those pictures for a couple months now. Those are not just pictures they got.
That's what the DEP needs. They need to see that.
Correct, yes. So, so I don't know how much I wanna get involved, but either I could just go to the planning board. I apologize, I'm just, I'm just stating a generic statement. So either I could go to them and get a records request and say, give me the pictures, or the board could just go to the planning board, the, the planning board department and saying, I need the pictures and then turn the pictures over. Because anything that's in, just so you understand, anything that's a public record of the town can be shared. It's not saying that, oh, we can't give you that because we're the planning board, I can't share. They're obligated to share these records. If they don't, then the DEP should be investigating the planning boards for not providing records to the Board of Health. Because the DEP agrees, this is the right agency that should be tackling this project, not, not the planning board saying, well, we have contamination, but you know, we're just gonna sit here and do nothing.
Thanks. So, state, state of Massachusetts has a permit program through EPA for industrial stormwater sites, called the Programmatic General Permit. And it has been in effect for several years, but they just came out with a new one that became effective early this year. So if you're a scrapyard and you have stormwater that leaves your property, you should be registered under that general permit. You should have a stormwater pollution prevention plan in place to keep contaminants from getting, you know, being released to the environment. You should have a spill cleanup and response plan as part of that. You should have routine inspections for evidence of, of problems that could impact stormwater. And you should have, um, at least quarter, quarterly monitoring of stormwater quality. And a scrapyard definitely is one of the categories that fits into that. So they would've had to refile a notice of intent, um, should be findable on EPA's website to see if they had one. I was asking these folks, because I don't know if this would be a Board of Health issue or a conservation commission issue. I, I don't know the regulations in town well enough, but it could be that, um, you know, contaminants run off, they're either going to the sanitary sewer, the ground, or the river. And if it's storm drains nearby, it's probably going to the river. So, in that case, I think it's Wetlands Conservation Commission issue and maybe they should be contacted. Try to get, you should be able to get a copy of the plan if you ask for it. You as a citizen or the board or the, any other board, and they should be able to see if these guys are doing what they say they're doing and if they're not, make them do it.
Right, right, right.
So maybe this needs to go back to the planning board?
I, I think finding out who would have jurisdiction per recommend, you know, would be the first issue.
I think that's the biggest problem is nobody knows where it exactly falls.
Yeah.
I did call DEP.
Oh, okay.
Uh, because Ken called and he had said he spoke with them and that somebody from the board should call. I'm not a board member, I'm just their, I'm just their secretary.
Oh, okay. You've been called recently?
So I have no authority and I don't want to be involved.
Oh, no, I understand, yeah.
And I'm not gonna be involved in this going forward, actually. I'm gonna, I'm bouncing this on my board. If my board members wanna pursue this, they can, but, um, Ken said that, um, they should call because EPA is, are, is the entity that should be mostly involved and they're the ones that permit this facility.
Yeah.
So when I talked to DEP, they also said that same thing, was that they, they do So when I talked to DEP, they also said that same thing, was that they, they do have an inspection, or they plan on inspecting the facility, but the guy I talked to, um, all of their end of year things are due right now. So he said he's not doing it right now.
Oh, okay.
Um, he does plan on getting out here, but, um, is that Ken?
I didn't know who that was.
This happens, I'm talking and then I forget what I'm saying. Um, so he said he's going out there.
Oh, okay.
He can only act on what he sees superficially.
Right, I understand.
So, if he doesn't see contamination there, which if it's a dry sunny day, he's not gonna see rainwater flowing off into a stream. Um, he can't really do much, uh, it, it all depends on what he sees on his inspection. So I asked him if there were concerns about something that had happened ten or fifteen years ago from previous owners. I don't follow this like you do, so I don't have the exact years, you know? Um, could you go in and do a, like a soil boring or a groundwater sample? No, he can't go in and do that unless he sees extensive evidence of contamination. And then he said he could push for that, but I guess it, it kinda seems like their hands are a little bound on proving there's contamination too. So he said that if, in order for them to act on it, they need proof. And they wouldn't come out to our meeting because they don't get involved in town politics. It's town, state, federal.
Yeah.
Um, so they're not coming out here. They'll come out to do a briefing if there's like a huge hazard. You know, they'll come out and brief the town on how to deal with it. Um, and he also said they're, they're not getting involved in town politics. The, the back and forth complaints, that he said, "That's not enough evidence for him to push for a soil boring or groundwater sample." So, they need to see things like, you know, fluids running into water or something like that. Um, but that's where that stands. I did call, Charlene asked me to call. I'm out of this. If this is something the board wants to do, they can't, I'm not making the phone calls anymore because I don't, I'm, everybody else should understand that, I don't have...
Brianna, do you have the name of the gentleman you talked to that gave you all that information?
I do, and I asked if I could share his information with the board so they could take it over, and he was okay with that. But it seems like his hands are a little bit tied too, but DEP is acting on it. They are going out.
See, I can see, I didn't have any information, cause there was no communication since the last meeting till tonight. So I appreciate you at least sharing that, so at least I know something that I had.
Yeah, I don't wanna E.P. myself a hundred times, so I'll wait till the meeting, and I'll just tell everybody at once.
No, that's fine, yeah, yeah, that's fine.
I'm out of this, I can't do anything about it in my here anyway, so.
I will admit, I watched, I was at the planning board meeting, for part of it the other night anyway. Um, they were discussing, their issue with contamination is the majority of those cars are on crushed rock. That's what they're saying. So they're not gonna be able to tell if there's fluids leaking into the ground, because it's gonna flow through the rocks. It's not gonna be like on the pavement. So that was one of their issues they spoke of the other night.
Well, so that's why everybody's hands are kinda tied, I think. I don't know.
Well, I blame it on the planning board for letting it go through like that. I mean, it shouldn't come back on us.
It's government, it's gonna be sticky, it's gonna be hard, and, um, you know, we're a small town, so.
Yeah, and it's tough to do.
Well, that, well, that was fine, Mike. I didn't catch anything, is, is, it's like, they acknowledged, "Oh yeah, we have pictures, we, you know, we saw, you know, we did, they did that inspection when they met with the manager, that was a year and a half ago."
Right.
So if they saw all, if they saw forty cars leaking, that means forty cars every single week has been leaking for a year and a half. And they said, and I said, "Why don't you talk to the Board of Health?" And they said, "Well, you know, we're just talking amongst ourselves." And I'm like, "Oh, so you don't care to notify any of the town board? You just wanna publicly admit it, but you just magically pretend it doesn't exist and you don't..."
Mike, you have to understand that we're a different board than what is to be here. The planning board, they're all different.
Yeah, I understand.
You know, and I can't agree with planning board being what a selectman, because I don't think things are getting done right. But, that's the town. People need to step up to the plate and do their part.
Was that Ken?
No. Somebody walked by, his suit jacket.
Yeah, I thought it was him.
I don't make stuff.
It looked like it was Bela.
So the only question we have, so you did, you did acknowledge that Ken did call them? And then he was, he is, well, he was a board member when he called, cause he...
Yeah, and that's why he said, he called me and said, when he called, he can't act on it now because he doesn't have an address, so.
Oh, okay.
He was just calling to let me know that he wasn't gonna be on the board anymore, and he was like, "Oh, by the way, I did."
Oh, oh, I see, okay, so that's when you kind, that's when you learned that he made the phone call, but you didn't know that information yourself until he told you.
Yeah, no, he just said, "One of the board members should call because it's permitted under EPA." And he didn't remember exactly what they had said, so he said, "One of the board members should call." So they understand it also, because it's like a big...
Well, I appreciate that update, yeah.
It's a web of stuff, he was taught to understand. So, uh, and it's hard too for me to convey that to people. So if people have concerns, um, it's, it's just better for, for it just to go directly to the person. I don't wanna be the middleman on it.
No, that's okay, I appreciate that, thank you.
But yeah, so that's the update.
Okay. All right, I guess, um, I guess, well, I guess we're gonna see, right, cause now we gotta see whether Ken is resigning, or Ken's gonna participate, or, I guess, or whatever you do wanna do.
Forget the Conservation Commission, I'd go to them, too.
But is DEP going out, you said?
They said they are gonna do a superficial inspection, so they're gonna, they're gonna, they're opening a complaint, but it's gonna depend on what they see, how they act.
Okay.
Or, and then it sounds like the federal permit might have some bounds for them to not, I don't know the, the depth of it all, but I'm not sure how far DEP can go if they see something, um, because of the permit from the EPA. So, okay. Wanna talk about the landfill now?
Yeah, thank you, appreciate it.
I'm gonna come around, cause I got a lot of stuff.
Oh, scary.
Tell me about it.
All right, let me take this out. Trish gave me a small...
Excuse me.
All right. So, I thought this down, so I'm gonna forget. Hopefully anything. And a lot of these things are interrelated, so I'm gonna try to stick to the order, um, of, of the documents.
How about the original complaint from the DEP? Scott, so it wouldn't have been easier to follow, or, is that it?
But I only brought up one, so.
A lot of these are parts of that.
Yeah.
This is the, what, December?
This is just the non-compliance, yeah, from September.
Yeah, so.
Would that help us at all, understanding this?
If you wanna, yeah, we can go through it in this order, I have a copy of it.
Awesome.
Do you need to follow? Only a couple of these who can help us, not all of them.
Okay, maybe all of them. Okay, item number one is the closure certification report. All right, which is the first thing on my list.
Yep.
So, this is for the Westland Farm, which is the part right along South Street, that we closed back in, uh, 2019. And, Don, I think you were here when we closed, like, aligned Phase Two section way over, closest to the transfer station. And then while we were doing that, DEP said, "Hang on, what's with all the stuff sticking out of the hill over there?" And we had to do a couple rounds of different investigations and looked into it. We got a lot of really good information from Mr. Frajer. And the work was done in two phases. The first phase was cutting all the big trees and clearing the brush and stuff out of there so we could get a better handle on what we had and what needed to be done for the whole part of the landfill. And while we were doing that, we ended up talking to Mr. Frajer and his son, who's, it was a parent, and he was on at least one of the boards back then too. Not this one, but, you know what I mean?
Is it Bob Downey?
No, 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 not on the Board of Health.
Oh, okay.
He was on a different board, Frajer's son, who I think lives right next door to him. Right there on South Street, just a little further north. Son-in-law.
Oh, that's gonna be standby spot, that's, um, Tim's up.
Yes. So I met Mr. Frajer and Tim out there, and he had all kinds of historical property. You know, there was another landfill on the other side of town that closed in the late forties, in the early fifties. They moved over here to South Street, and people would just basically pull up and dump stuff out. And when it got cold and burnt, which is what we did in the fifties and sixties, right? And, uh, the guy who owned the property, cause it wasn't owned by the town, he passed away. And his wife said to the town, "You can't keep doing this on our property," cause the town was kinda running, it wasn't private. And so it moved a little further south. And as, as we got older and our ways of handling waste changed, what happened was there was less, um, burning and more open dump. And when it got smelly in the summer, you'd cover it up. And then by the seventies, you know, you were covering every day or a couple of times a week at least, um, to keep down bugs and, you know, rats and all, everything else.
I think they'd say about, um, half of a dishwasher was hanging out, half of a washer and dryer, tire here.
So, at the end of all the work, we did some test bits, and we said, "Okay, the, the southern side of the site looks pretty good." Okay, a landfill's supposed to have two feet of cover material on top of it, and then vegetation. And that, that soil is there, um, both to prevent environmental concerns like odors, rodents, um, leachate from developing, right? And what leachate is, is when water seeps in through the top of the landfill, comes in contact with the garbage, and then it seeps out, gets into the brook, contaminates the brook, or just makes little puddles of leachate along the side. So, we did the first phase of the work with the clearing, and we put together a little report. And then when we did the second phase, we hired Roach to come in, and he, um, basically closed out the rest of the landfill. Now, there's certain things you do when you close a landfill that we couldn't do, okay? And just to sort of make it clear, if this is the brook right here, and this is the landfill, we want a landfill to be, you know, three feet over, one feet up. Well, the thing was like this, and right next to the edge of the brook. So we had two choices, filter it in, right, which would've put us in the brook, we couldn't do that. Or cut back the landfill, although the landfill had sat vacant for over twenty years, or forty years. We weren't gonna do that either. We ended up making more environmental problems and potentially creating a bigger mess and long-term creating more leachate, cause we're pulling off all the good cover that was there. So, came up with an alternate plan, basically to stabilize the soil and slopes and make sure the top had at least two feet of good cover material on top. And we submitted that plan to DEP, DEP, and they signed off on it, and Roach did the work. We submitted it.
That's where you pulled out the old tires and put them in a bin.
Washing machines, a lot of metal.
Put them in their own little separate bin, okay?
Yep. So we put together this report, and it was, you know, it had all the contractor's mills, his soil test data. It was about this thing. And, um, prior to this known as non-compliance, we got a letter that said, "Your report's not good enough. We need more information." And so, what I did was say, "Okay, what can I do to address those comments?" One of the things was we didn't submit electronically through their portal. I don't know if I can use the portal, but we will. When we're, when we're ready to resubmit, we will, we will do it. There was a, you know, the plans were eight and a half by eleven or eleven by seventeen, they were hard to read. I'm gonna show them to you when we get to that point. He's right, they were hard to read at that scale. The big thing really was the type of low permeability cover material. The, uh, there's two different primary specifications for it. One is a SIV test, where you put, you run through different SIVs, and you want a certain amount of the soil to be in the silt and clay range, okay? So that when you have the field test, or the rule of thumb is, if you can take, go out and grab it and squeeze it, and it kinda stays together, it's nice and tight, not like clay tight, but it's gotta have some bigger sand and gravel particles in it too, that, that's usually pretty good cover material. As part of the quality control, Roach gave us soil tests from soils, from some soils, and we wanna use his soil. You have that test, and you also test the permeability, how much water will leach through it on its compacting in place. Well, the first test didn't pass, and we rejected it. And the second test didn't pass, and we rejected it. The third test, he's like, "You're gonna have to work with me because I can't find anything reasonably close that, that meets the spec."
It's all corrosive?
No, it wasn't the chemical, it was, he could either find stuff that was too silty in clay, right? Which is good because it's low permeability, which you, I think is the most important thing, unless you're on the side slopes.
High erosion.
Could, you're likely to have it erode, right? So, but most of the soil we were putting down was on the top, not on the side slopes, because we couldn't go out into the brook at the three to one. So, I responded to that in the revised closure report. I have a draft for everybody, since I wanted to go through it. And I didn't know how many people would be here. We don't have to go, look, everything from the A back is not, we're not gonna look at.
I think I've actually been looking for this thing, but now that I see it, I'm like, "Really?"
It's about six pages of text and a lot of chapters.
Wow.
And, um, the big thing, I, you know, his big question is this whole, um, we didn't call it deviations from the plan, that's the soil test, that we didn't hit the requirement. And what I said we did about it was we said, "All right, look, we rejected a couple. We went with the stuff that meant permeability requirements, cause that'll provide a good tight cover material for the landfill that's not gonna allow as much leachate to be generated in the future." Then we had somebody come out and test it in the field with a nuclear, uh, troxler, nuclear density gauge to make sure that it had actually met that, that permeability requirement, and it did. We had tested topsoil in the field, it met the requirements. So, yeah, I put together this response for him, and it has to be submitted electronically. And I have to tell who's the Board of Health chairman and get them to sign off on it.
I was hoping we're gonna be able to reorganize tonight, but I heard word that we can't reorganize until we have a third member.
Okay. I talked to Ken.
We can't have a third member till we have a resignation letter. Then he should've come by and handed it to us.
He probably dropped it off in the clerk's office. I think that was...
He told me on Friday, last Friday, when I talked to him, that he was told that he needed to resign because he doesn't live in town anymore.
Right.
Which I understand.
Yep.
That'd be in town's position, but, um...
But the screwy part is, he's still looking for houses in Warren.
He can do that.
No, he's living in Monson.
He's living in Monson. So, yeah. That is a, um, issue that I'm hoping, um, I don't know, I mean, is it, is there an acting chairman? Can we designate somebody to be...
Technically, he would be the acting chairman.
Are responsible, done, like, person?
Everybody's pointing to me.
Congratulations, you got the chair.
You've been here longer than me, you got it.
How's it feel?
I don't know, I'm numb.
I'm numb. I'd like you to look at the letter and the first six pages of this, if you can, before you sign it. And it'll all could be assigned tonight, but I can come out at any time.
Where they at?
Here.
Oh, it's easy.
So my letter here.
Okay, so how much of this is gonna take care of what?
I like that you're getting right to the point.
Well, we have to know what else we have to do.
Um, yes, that, that's... Great question, right there. Great question right there. I mean, it's not like we can just send in, you know, a bunch of lawnmowers out there or something like that. Isn't there some kind of like specifications on something that's, it's over two inches thick? It's got to come down on it if it's less than two inches and stuff like that? Wasn't, isn't there some bullshit specifications all coming up?
No. That's about for the future, or for the existing conditions. We're just talking about getting all the paperwork in for the past.
All right, okay. I thought you jumped.
No, I didn't do that to you. To, to respond to the paperwork issues, we need to submit this report, which will be signed by Matt, who's P in my office, a revised post-closure plan, the DEP form, and the notice of landfill operation. Three of those things, other than getting the signatures, are pretty easy. Okay?
What was the other case? We have the notice of the landfill, the revised closure plan, and submit the report signed by Matt. What was the other one?
The notice of landfill operation. And it's the post-closure plan. I don't know. It is kind of important. Put this right on top of that. Let him set the binder. Okay. So, this has all the documentation for the closure report. Mine's not double-sided, that's why it feels much, much bigger. This is a little cover letter addressing his comments about the soil and where did it, you know, he said he didn't think it was very specific about, nothing about where some of the dirt came from, whoop head, which is on the reports, but I called it out. Saying that as soon as we submit our copies, we're going to submit the EZ file. Or he placed portal documents and he wanted bigger than inches. The form that the DEP has us fill out, that goes with the portal.
That's a good one, yeah.
It's not bad. You know what? The form itself isn't that big.
Really?
It's the making it work in the system.
Oh, yeah.
All right, so, I need to identify, well, first, it's not highlighted, but right up in the top right.
Yep.
I think yours is, but maybe not all of them. Since transmittal number.
Okay.
That's the number I'm going to get when I'm on the portal, so I can't fill that in yet. I need a contact person for the board of health. Is it M U R K O W S K I?
M A K O W S K I.
M A K.
O W S K I.
Okay. And then if you look at the form, what it does, what it does is it calls out specific sections of the regulations or requirements and then it wants to know where that information is. And when we submitted this thing back in early 20 or late 19, some of these things, I just said, refer to the 2014 post-closure plan, which had been approved. Refer to the assessment document, which had been approved. But I didn't catch a copy of every single one. And so that was one of his earlier comments to me on the phone. So, this documents like what they're asking for and what page it's on in each document. So, the first few things, West Closure Cert, is the big thing in the binder. And we get down to the bottom here and they talk about the post-closure plan. That is how are you maintaining the landfill? How are you inspecting the landfill? How are you, all the groundwater monitoring, surface water monitoring, the two domestic wells that we test at, the landfill gas readings, the leachate sampling, and then what are you going to do if there's a problem? What's your action plan? That was easy. I took the 2014, I added in the domestic wells that they've made us add to it since then and I updated it into this, which is going to tell you as your consultant. As your consultant, you should read, but this is what we're doing now. This is, or what we're supposed to be doing. But it says things like, "You're going to mow once a year." Okay? And when, you know, jumping down to the bottom of the page and it, and the letter that DEP sent, when he went out there, he said, "The West landfill hasn't been mowed." And when I drove by Friday morning, because, you know, Warren's on my way to Hartford from Montgomery. I just wanted to take a ride and see how things look.
Oh, it's scenic out here.
Oh, the leaves are changing, it's beautiful. You know, it hasn't been mowed since we finished the work. And there's some pretty good stuff growing up there. And that's exactly what they want to avoid, right? They made us cut all those big trees down that kept you from seeing the landfill because someday they're going to fall over or die.
Well, then the roots pop up through the membrane.
There's no membrane there.
Okay.
But it just exposes the waste of water and the environment and vermin and whatever else causes the problems. That's why we had to cut them all down. Even though some of them had probably been grown there since, you know, 1960 when that section started, stopped being active. So, so that we could finish the form, we updated the closure plan, post-closure plan.
So, now who are these people that can maintain that, cutting that grass?
This is what I said to Brianna on the phone earlier this week because originally, when we went out to bid for the operations of the transfer station, it was, you know, the operator's responsible for mowing the landfill. And we had written in there, "When the last West landfill's closed, we're going to add that in." But I, you know, I said to Brianna, "I don't think that the final contract that was signed with Patrick was exactly what we went out to bid for." I remember we had three people, we had like three people submit, but one of them was just a guy that was going to run it. He didn't have any insurance and probably would have done a fine job, but, you know, we couldn't really. The other one, I think, perhaps it's been, either his numbers, something. You know, it was a, it was a unique bid opening, but.
So, that not for nothing, Scott's part of the deal. That's what Pat, Pat's from S and W. It's still where the solar panels are on this side of the fences. He still mows that.
Outside the solar field.
Outside the solar field, right?
Yeah, and the solar people.
So, he's still under the original contract.
But I don't know if that includes the West landfill or not.
Oh, I don't think so.
I didn't think it got pulled out.
Yeah, correct.
In which case, you need somebody to mow.
Where did that paper go that DEP sent? Is that the package DEP sent me?
Yep.
Because, do you guys look through that?
Yeah.
Did it say anything? Because he said we should see that before we meet about the West landfill. I just didn't have time to read it.
Can I see that?
I'm not sure what it's about.
It gave how high they have to be cut above the ground and stuff.
The trees, the vegetation.
Yep.
So, that would answer your questions.
But that was the clearing to be done before we did the extra capping work.
I think this just came in.
No, this is from 2016 now.
Oh, I see.
Oh, he, yeah, he just sent it and said to read it before our meeting. I just didn't have time. I was hoping there'd be something good in there.
So, shouldn't the contractor that could be capable of doing that have a liability insurance of a minimum of?
I would think that the town probably has some standard liability insurance requirements and that that would be.
Million?
Whatever, whatever you want. There's not a lot of, um, let me see, does it jump? I feel like it was, this was about the solar field.
So, who would that be? That would be maybe Nancy?
Who? To find out what our town's liability is.
Yeah, for subcontractors and contractors. What the minimum is they have to hold?
I can ask, yeah.
Cool.
I wonder if that'd be in our bylaws, do you think?
I don't think so.
It might have to change more than our bylaws changed, so.
It was updated in 2016.
Basically, whatever we have for the landfill would be applicable to the West landfill. So, you know, once it gets up to an inch and a half, two inches, you want to cut it. And there's some stuff that's getting pretty big.
And so, Scott, what happens here is that this is the last year for Patrick to maintain that transfer station. It's got to go out the bit.
Okay.
So, then maybe we can incorporate, because I can't believe that we're going to have to cut this before the, and before the winter comes in.
Do we? Well, basically, your response to DEP should say, "We're working on getting this cut and this is when we're going to do it."
Okay.
I might have the insurance requirements in this whole bid package, which is in B.
Because then to, to put it out there with the transfer station bit as either as an option or incorporated, is something to discuss.
I think it should, I think whoever operates the transfer station next should continue to be responsible for.
For the West.
Mowing it, mowing everything outside of the solar field, checking the leachate level in the, in the, in the tank, and doing all the other stuff that, that he's already doing. Yeah, I don't have the, I didn't include that section.
I did, but.
I have the technical specs, but I have the whole thing easy. But I got that from the, I think from Nancy.
Yeah, I'll reach out to Nancy to find out. Because, yeah, we need a short-term solution to satisfy them, I guess.
Yeah.
And that's probably two, one count for now. I don't know. I guess we could ask Tom if, if he could, if we could put it off because the growing season is about to stop, but I don't know.
But if there's trees and bushes, they may want them done before winter.
And we'll have to look into it.
Jeremy was supposed to come tonight. He said he was going to, but I've responded to him. I, I checked on him last week to see if he was, you know, to remind him our meeting was this week. He didn't respond, so, I don't know.
So, other than insurance, I mean, this landscaper.
You gotta have the money.
You need, we need, they need to have the equipment. They need low center of gravity because of the slope. So, they need a wide foot.
So, when we hired, when we did the first clearing job of all the trees and that, but also all the brush, right? Because there was a lot of brush over there too. This guy out of Agewell, Kane's Electrical, weird name for.
Yeah, right.
Clearing, but, I mean, does a bunch of clearing jobs.
He has insurance, right?
And he's got insurance, won the job and did it. And he ended up just doing everything by hand because you're not, you're not going to be driving up and down those hills.
Tom said to get a weed, get a couple guys out there with a weed whacker. It would take all day, but it would get done, is what he said. Did, did you see the vegetation? Could a weed whacker take down what's out there?
Some of it, you'd need something a little bigger.
Chainsaw?
You know, maybe the, they have blade attachments. My home yard, it doesn't work very good. Maybe that's my weed whacker, or maybe a chainsaw.
Weed whackers and chainsaws.
You're getting some, uh.
Because we're, we're kind of.
Poison oak looking stuff that's.
Could thank people who are pants, but it's cold now.
Really high.
We don't have to tell people.
So, we've got a bunch of local, trying to keep the, the work local, which is always a good thing in my opinion. We got a couple landscapers out there. Can't we, like, get this together so that we can say, "Look, this is the project that needs to be get, that needs to get done." Yesterday.
Yep.
And, um, these are the requirements. Is that something that you can?
So, the, the left side is the hills from the, from the park. The right side are the big trees that are right there, but that's the biggest.
So, it's the left side that needs to be taken care of?
So, it's from here over.
Okay. Oh, yeah, I don't think a chainsaw's going to take, or a weed whacker's going to take.
Just a little tiny handsaw, I mean, uh.
Yeah.
Maybe chainsaw, yes, same, same.
What if we got, got a couple of those brush hogs or something?
That's what I was thinking.
Go rent them. I mean, our budget, because we don't have a budget to pay somebody right now to do it this year. I think that's the problem.
Oh, that's an interesting point.
That's been the problem all along is that we, I don't think that the board made a budget for this. And that's why I'm saying we got to read these contracts because there is money that I encumbered, but I don't know if it's money that needs to be paid out to like Roach or Barton or, I don't know, I'm not familiar with this stuff. And, um.
Roach is all paid for.
He is. What, what is the money called at the end when the project is done?
Retainage?
Yeah, that was paid to him already and stuff. I mean, I don't, okay.
What's the other one, Brianna? What else are you thinking about?
Well, I was thinking, yeah, um.
Barton, we're not, we haven't been an anchor for any.
Laquitas or?
La Judas.
La Judas, okay.
Yeah, it's not how it looks at all.
Okay. Barton La Judas. Okay, so, um, yeah, so there is money that I encumbered and that I just don't want to spend it if it was for something. But it was encumbered last year also. So, that's what I've been saying is that we might be able to transfer that money and create a small budget. I mean, I think I probably encumbered like ten to fifteen thousand dollars, but that might be enough to have somebody go mow. If it's not, then we, we probably still have about three grand in our budget. I don't know what a brush hog costs, but I mean, kind of a couple of those.
To rent, it's going to be, I bet you, a bit of eighty bucks a day.
Yeah, see, so worst case, we could do that. I mean, and then, but that's what I'm saying. We, I don't know if we should transfer that money out of whatever the encumber, until we figure out if that money was encumbered last year.
So, now that kicks it up to, if it's going to be over ten grand, now it's going to go out the bit.
And that, well, Ken also said that we should get three contractors. We need three contractors to come in and give us a quote before anything, he said.
Wow, really? That's cool.
That way we at least have an estimate of what it's going to cost also.
But it also has to go out for bid, right?
Well, we need, well, we don't know. That's why we need people to come give us an estimate. Because if it's over so much, then you need it.
Yeah.
That's a good idea because we're just guesstimating at this point in time.
So, we could call Say Black, we could call Landscape Evolution, we could call these people. We could, we could ask them what they would charge us, document it. In the meantime, I can make copies of all these contracts because I don't want you guys trusting my interpretation of these things and making decisions about it. So, I think everybody needs to read so we know that money that the board had encumbered last year with Priscilla, what that money was encumbered for. If it's, if it's dead money, not doing anything, it's just going to empty out into the general fund.
As far as I'm concerned right now, Brianna, it's dead. It's, it's ready for the Christmas.
So, then, yeah, so before it goes to the Christmas party, let's see if we can maybe transfer it if we need to.
Yeah. Yep, that's a good idea.
I think that's our short term. And in the meantime, I've got Tom pretty, I think, I think I can hold him off a little bit. He was, I was on the phone with him for an hour the other day. He's, he's okay. He wrote a book, he's telling me about all this stuff, so just keep smiling, you know?
That's awesome.
I'm going to go back to the form for a minute.
Scott, no, before you go there, I got to get this, I got to get this out before I forget it. A, just like Brianna's talking about, to get a couple of locals together and show them what has to be done. You know what has to be done. So, what would your time be in getting together with these boys and go, "Well, look, something like this has to be cut down, that has, that could be whatever from there."
Well, that's all in the reports you gave us, right? The post-management, like things have to be cut after this much growth? Didn't you say that, too, there?
It, it's not that specific. It basically says they'll be mowed. So, you're going to cut it down to a few inches.
Okay.
Is it? And, yeah, I mean, I can take a couple of hours. I'm not going to charge you for my travel time or anything like that because it's an hour, no matter where I come from. And meet with some both, you know? I need you to identify two or three people locally that you'd be comfortable working with and maybe we call this Kane's guy because like he was pretty reasonable to work with and see if he wants to.
Sure.
There are two other guys that had bid that were.
I probably have record of it.
Next town north. Yeah, I'm sure I have the bid specs. This is a lot less than that.
North Brookfield? West Brookfield?
There were two guys that were just starting a landscaping business, but I feel like you guys knew.
Hawk's Lawn Care, maybe, I feel like they were new.
Two guys landscaping?
Green Boys? There's a lot of them, everybody's landscaping.
Everybody does landscaping around here.
Yeah, it's a fallback.
But, yeah.
Oh, great. All right, then, um, we'll get in touch with them, see who's interested. But we'll find out our liability insurance is for the, for the town, so we can state that...
I think Ken spoke. Wasn't it a million?
He said.
It's, it's impossible. Is, is the pay scale in your prevailing wage type deal?
I think that that may be dependent on the size of the job.
Oh, okay. I just thought because it was a town job that it would necessitate of paying prevailing wage.
Do I get prevailing wage?
Oh, yeah. We wish.
Anyways, are we sorry? I just stopped.
No worries.
Big timing there.
On the second page, there's a section about financial assurance. Right? If you were a private landfill, you'd have to put up a bond to cover thirty years of post-closure monitoring and maintenance. I think that when we submitted this in twenty fourteen for the closure of the land landfill section, that we just put dashes in there because town pays for it out of their budget. And the post-closure monitoring plan says that. We allocate money every year, right? You pay us to collect samples. We take them to the laboratory, we, we do the reports. So yesterday, the guys were out there a couple weeks ago. Guys and girls, collecting the samples. We do it every September and March. Has part of your contract with Patrick. You pay for the maintenance on the landfill. The Borrego guys are responsible for inside the fence line. So I have to fill that in, but I just can't remember what clever way I entered it last time. So I gotta find that twenty fourteen. And then this will have to be signed, and I don't know if I should call you acting chairman of the Board of Health? Board of Health representative? Board of Health member?
I don't know myself, just checking.
Sounds good.
So, um, so we have to have three people here, and then they would vote to see who would be the chairman. Is that the way that went?
Yeah, you guys can reorganize, yeah.
Okay.
Three people.
Um, so it would be acting?
And do you have anybody, are you waiting for, Waxens are this year, right?
We can get somebody to fill his position temporarily, once he puts the resignation in.
That's all we're waiting for, is the resignation.
And then people run. Who's going, who gonna run?
Hopefully a retired public health nurse or something, uh, somebody that's got a...
You get like an instant five thousand enemies?
You can ask my doctor to run. She lives in Warren. She likes me.
Okay. Now, I said that this report needs the post-closure, the form, addressing Tom's earlier comments, which the cover letter and the report itself does, that it needs to notice his landfill operations. This is, this is a bigger deal.
So other, before we go on this last draft, did you want me to sign it so that you already have it? In case it does happen, then you'll be offset to rock and roll?
It, well, two things. If I had brought one that wasn't orange, that would work. Me, I'd feel a little more comfortable just waiting till all the docs are filled in.
Then four.
That was up to you.
Just checking.
This is something, could you scan it to, or send it to me by email? I could have you sign it and then scan it to you.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, he did have one other comment, and that was that the maps were hard to read. I remember when we submitted electronically, I think this map was, and even the hard copy was eleven by seventeen. So, there's three maps. These were done for Roach by Summit Engineering and stamped by their PE, because it was a requirement in the contract to give us a NASBIL. He gave us three maps. This, he went back out, even though we gave him a survey and a design plan, and surveyed this western landfill before doing any work. And this is South Street here, and here's the entrance to the landfill. Then he went back out after the work. Oh, that's the messy one, hold on. And did it. It basically shows that in here, we have twelve to twenty-four inches of dirt. We put a roach-controlled blanket down, so the finer grain stuff wouldn't run into the rock.
Scott, I'm gonna have to stop you for just one second.
Planted seed. And, you know, I think the slopes are pretty stable. It didn't all end up in the rock, which is good.
I used to wanna study landfills, try to fix some for store.
Oh, jeez.
I changed my mind because they smell bad.
What are you studying? Taking a full-time degree? EMS?
Yeah, I'm graduating and they finally smell a lot better.
Nice.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't like landfills. I like them, but I don't like them. You know, waste is a problem. We're all gonna be living on a landfill in the next two hundred years.
Where else are you gonna put it?
Exactly, I don't know.
Not gonna be living.
When my older kid graduated, my uncle was stationed in Rome. He's crazy. Thirty-five years he was stationed in Haiti. We never went to visit him.
I would go to Haiti.
He wanted me to go when I was a teenager, but my parents weren't even there. He did a couple of years in Mexico City.
Why in heaven's name do you live in Montgomery and draw like a trap? I grew up in Westfield.
Oh, me too. Well, from ten on.
Oh, from ten on, yeah.
Reno Bower?
Six on, yep. Graduated from Westfield High.
Me too. Whereabouts did you live?
East Mountain Road. Oh, they're there. Right next to the golf course, the big white house that still sits there.
I know.
Yep.
Were you kids friends with creative kids?
And you?
We lived out past the college at George Russell.
Oh, Western Ave, up that way.
Yeah, bit further base.
Yep, yep. I used to deliver newspapers up there.
Me too.
The Sunday paper of all things.
I did the daily version.
So you're, you're in Montgomery. Now, how long you been in Montgomery?
Two thousand one.
Wow.
So, you know, got it, was working in Connecticut, got an apartment in Summers, bought a house in Springfield, got married. Figured we'd live there about four or five years to start our house. Think we were there seven, and then we could, we got tired of hearing the neighbor's alarm clock, because we were close.
Oh, see, I hate that.
And now we are out, way, way out.
Yeah, Montgomery is way, way out. So what year did you graduate?
Eighty-five.
Oh, my God, you're a youngster.
I know. Just a baby.
Seventy-six? We just had our forty-fifth reunion.
Who do I know that's about your age? Steve White, year or two, oh, younger? Mary Beth? Davidson, I probably just hear her name. Patrick Kennedy?
They were probably younger.
They're all, they're all family. I was in the paint. So every five or six years.
So eighty-five, right. Who was close to that in my family? The last name Collis?
What?
Collis. Neil, Amy. I don't know who here they graduated. And of course, he has kids now, too. So I don't know what year they would have graduated. No, I don't know. I moved out of there in, off East Mountain Road in seventy... Seventy-six, fall of seventy-six. I lived down Notre Dame.
Okay.
For a while, and then I moved out of there and went to St. Paul, which is down off Meadow Street. I had an apartment upstairs from my mom there. Stayed there until I went in the military.
What branch?
Navy.
Very good.
That's a contact.
Well, I haven't even looked at Tom's comments since he died. So one of Tom's comments was he did not like this map, especially the smaller version. It's got both the new and the old contours on it. And he asked if he could get a colorized version of it, like Ted Turner. The problem is, we didn't make these maps, and so the answer is no. And a part of me feels like I'm really only hired just to get the sheet two for the post-closure stuff. So I'm hoping that just having the bigger one is good enough. But if not, I, at one point, Gustavo from our office had taken a red pencil and colored it in solid one. But that actually made it work. So he's gonna get full-size copies of these, as are, I have a separate guys here, too. It'll be in the final submit, but I thought he might want, you know?
So they'll be having you on a contract to monitor these dumps, transfer stations, landfills?
I don't know, but I'm still doing it. I'm hoping he'll pay me for it. September and March. I think it was a three-year contract about three years ago. So I'm all worried the third year, though. But I don't know the price.
What'd you say? You don't know if you're in the third year about what?
I don't know if I'm in the third or fourth year of a three-year contract. But either way, I'm not, I'm not gonna increase the price.
Okay.
The lady from the lab keeps calling me and said, these aren't really old prices for wiring. Can I pump them up? And I keep saying, no, you can't. All right, notice of landfill operations. To me, this is the biggest, this is the sticky point. All right? Because we have, first, we never did it for the far side, for the main big landfill. And I think it's because we couldn't get through Worcester County. It was a disaster. And then we haven't done it for this side. Now, it is a written notice that talks all about your landfill. Fabulous it is. Each staple group here, and then four, two there, this one. Each staple section, it's basically the same wording, but one covers the west landfill, because that's a different parcel. And one covers the main landfill, because it's the other parcel. This is gonna be a note, basically, that gets filed with the county registry, goes on the deed, so that nobody in the future says, I didn't know I was buying a landfill. I was gonna buy a house up there. It's got solar energy and it's got a nice view. So the wording is pretty described. The description, you know, it says who owns the property and what parcel it is. It says, look at the map. It says, um, what years it operated. It says how it was capped. It talks about, there's a thirty-year post-closure monitoring requirements. I went pretty vague on the environmental monitoring. Um, you know, I said water samples should be tested for leachate indicator parameters, metals and DLCs, because I didn't wanna list out sixty-four parameters. I'm hoping that that's okay. My intention is to include this as a draft. They really want the final version of the state and say, hey, Tom, does this wording look okay? I sent it to him and asked him that question and said, we're still working, tweaking the maps a little bit. And he said, I'll wait till the maps are done to get back yet. And this will be signed by the chairman of the Board of Health, the PE, and then both those people will consign, notarize that they are who they are. And there's one, like I said, for each side of the, um, like, of the block, the different landforms. The issue that Tom brought up, which is what I didn't know about, is this. Let me see which site this is. I'm gonna do the west landfill first. I didn't write one for everybody, because I didn't think we needed it. It's got our certification. It's got our matching E P final number. It references the NASBIL by Summit, with some for Roach, plus some of the other historic NASBILs. But over here along the street, it's got the property line. It's got the new contours. It's got the stream. It's got this line here that's the approximate limit of landfill. That's the issue, because I didn't realize that they want survey meets and bounds on that line.
Really?
All right, now look. Whether it's this side of the landfill or this side of the landfill, I've been coming out here since about two thousand and five. I can't tell you that this is the exact line on a landfill. That if you go five feet further out, you're not gonna find something. Or if you come back, you're not gonna not find something. This is based on best available information. And if I could submit this map, it'd be like, look, here's the property line. The landfill's the whole thing. It's pretty obvious. But once you have to put the meets and bounds on it, it's like, people think that it's surveyed to the, right, hundreds of a foot.
Wasn't dumb, not for nothing, hey, but wasn't dumb, this would have been Tim Zopps, Nate's, Nate's playground, okay? So the house that was there, that he grew up in, would have been surveyed.
Over here.
Way over there?
Yeah. This is the new, remember we bought, the line used to be right here.
Right, right, and then we, then we bought.
So that we would own all of the landfill. And I'm pretty comfortable that the landfill, you know, doesn't go further south. North, north than this.
Okay. I thought there was something way up in here, too.
I mean, is there a landfill under the access road? I don't wanna dig up, no.
I am, yeah, I'm gonna go there.
So how it's, I mean, he wants the meets and bounds?
The requirement is that it has to have the meets and bounds. So I talked to my chief of survey, and he can put meets and bounds on this, and I've called it, you know, approximate disposal area, and I think that that's the best we can do. This one was done back in fifteen. From the other side. Here's our transfer station. Right?
Yeah.
Feel pretty good about this. It's the edge of the liner.
Yeah.
Right? I've got an area here that was capped with plastic, and I've got an area down here that's capped with plastic. Here's the access road coming in.
Yeah.
And those were surveyed. And that same survey gives me this approximate edge of landfill.
How were they surveyed?
By survey.
With what, though?
But I think that...
With eye or like equipment?
Yeah, equipment. In Connecticut, we have a, something called a Class D map, which is, you know, my kid drew a picture, and it's the lowest certification, or I just took two other, you know, the map, this town street map and a couple other things together. But, you know, to say that there's not ways beyond this gas port, man, I don't know how somebody could guarantee that. Again, we're talking about making it clear so that people don't build on it. Or try to develop it into anything other than, you know, it's already got its highest and best use to the solar on the top. And he did say that he'd need to see the solar on the top. But the approximate, you know? This isn't done, because I'm a little nervous about it.
And, you know, if you build a home there, you're gonna have these gas ports that give you fuel for a beat.
These ones, the vents up on top, there's actually gas in it, and it's good, because that's what they're there for, the vent gas. The ones on the edges... The ones on the edges, there is a gas on it, and that's good because it means it's not migrating out.
Right.
And that's what you want, too.
And if Biden gets his way, we're gonna have to cap them off because they're basically an open well.
Greenhouse.
Greenhouse gases, yeah.
So this is a thing that we still need to finish, and I'm expecting like in the next week or so, we'll have something put together that will be submittable. But I wanted to let you guys know that that was not a hundred percent.
And then what if he denies it again?
Well, that, well, this is important because that text, the, that goes on the deed, and these, which will be all filed with Worcester County, we wanna do it once, right? We do not wanna have to revise and resubmit. There's gonna be a filing fee, I, I told you the other day. I, you know, I think that the town attorney is gonna need to file this. We'll have to prepare and we'll work with them, but there's gonna be some component of that that is, you know, not for the consultant to do typically. And so, you know, they'll need my larger maps and whatever their requirements are. But also they expect, you know, most of the last year and a half not in your office, Worcester County. So this is, we have to submit one for each side.
How do landfills normally do their meets and bounds for this?
Well, any new, new landfill, right? Since, hmm, anything that started filling since about the seventies, they would have to get a permit. So when we, before I got involved and before any of us were involved, they did phase two here. They got a permit for overfilling, because phase one really comes to about here, and they overfilled the slope. They laid out exactly where they were gonna dig dirt out, put in a plastic bottom, fill, cover with plastic, and so, and then when they, when we put the cap on it, right, we rolled plastic over the top, we welded it onto the plastic from the bottom, we had to clear that off. And it was Christmas time, and it was, you know, ideally you'd do it when it's over forty degrees and dry, and it rained every day for the whole time we had it open. It was extremely difficult for the people doing the work.
So then this problem that we're having-
So basically, it's like the Ziploc, we sealed it, their little reactors have plastic all the way around. And we entomb into the waste. And, but we know, they surveyed the edges, so we know exactly where that is, but sixties, seventies.
Right, so D E P's seen this before, though, where old landfills don't have exact meets and bounds because of that?
Yeah, I think it's, my assumption is that they're reasonable and they know. Dan, I don't know Tom very well, Stan, I think would be understanding.
This is Dan's boss.
Yeah. Charlie was here before, sometimes it would probably depend on the day you caught him on. But I, yeah, I wanted to let you know that that was, that was an outstanding issue. And that we're gonna need assistance with the filing.
Once it's ready, I'll reach out to town council.
Going back to Tom's letter, where we started, so he noted some operational issues. He noticed that the west landfill wasn't mowed, and he kind of brought that up. And we have to be able to respond. We're, you know, we're gonna be pursuing it, I guess is the response.
Oh, yeah.
And if you'd reach out to him, I'll reach out to him, make sure I copy you, and then we're all like, well, let him know that we have, if we have ten fingers, at least he'd have fingers. The other thing that he brought up was some batteries and some photovoltaic cells that had been out and exposed that were broken.
And don't forget the oil shed, the lock on the oil shed was-
Well, yeah, I mean, to me, the lock on the oil shed was, somebody just missed it, right? It was probably a one-time thing, and it was just bad luck that that was the day he was there. Because I, I was by Friday morning, and it was locked. I know that that's after, you know, after the fact, but my guess is that-
Is it possible that there's somebody that comes in and empties that oil tank, and it was left open for them so that they could get in here and empty that?
Well, it should only be unlocked the first Saturday of every month, because that's the only time they take oil, right?
It should be, right, right, yeah, that's right.
My guess is that, is it so Sue down there? It's a while since I was there when they were running, that Sue was there and, or whoever was helping her on that Saturday, and they just forgot to lock it up, so.
And that solar panel evidently has been around for years.
Does that mean that it was, you know, since May first, and he was there on May thirteenth? Probably, because, you know, it's been on the line since April first, who knows? Doesn't matter, they're on top of it now, and, you know, we've addressed it with the operator, we're okay. The battery cell, you had mentioned that, that Patrick took care of it. When I was there, sitting on the retaining wall was a car battery.
Yeah, I emailed him yesterday too, he didn't respond.
So, you know, that's something that we need, you know, there was no signage, there was no containment, it's supposed to be indoors, those kind of things.
It's supposed to be indoors?
Or covered.
I've always seen those batteries uncovered, always.
I tried, wanted to do inspections, I tried to go, and there's none there. Or they're covered with screen doors from the slop area. Um, there was also a couple of TVs that looked like they were broken. So I've talked to D E P about TVs before, because my thought was, once we opened the transfer station officially, that aren't TVs supposed to be inside? And the answer was, well, they don't have to be. But if they're broken, it could be mercury bleaching metals or whatever else, mercury, any other heavy metals. Then they're supposed to be covered and managed as a, you know, consumer electronic device. So, we need to make sure that, that, you know, Solway Solutions is on top of that.
Was the solar panel gone? I think I asked you that.
I didn't see anything behind the waste oil shed, and I've seen it there before.
Okay.
The other thing that's out there, we've repaired it a couple of times. On the closed phase two landfill that has the leachate collection system, right, the lined part, closest to the transfer station. There's a bunch of pipes that stick out of the ground, several feet. And that's if you ever need to flush them and clean it up. Nobody ever needs to, you never have to, but if you ever had to, well, if I or the guys see that the cap's broken, usually we just run down to the hardware store in Palmer, and we get something and put it back on. But there was about three that were broken and probably had been hit with a mower or something.
Oh, yep.
Right?
Oh, from there, like going on from there, okay.
So, we can fix it and put it on, you know, get something to fix it and put it on the bill, or you guys can talk to Solway Solutions and say, they shouldn't be coming off, except for, you know, operations.
If you're whacking them.
What are they again, caps for flushing what?
For the leachate cleanouts.
Okay.
Leachate collection pipe cleanouts.
So that's on the, that's on Patrick's part, it's not on the west part?
It's not, it's on Patrick's.
Oh, that definitely got hit by a lumbor, you know.
So those things are, you know, here, here, um, oh, there, sorry, they're actually shown on the map. One here, one here, one here. And I'd say at least two out of those three are broken right now.
You think the pipe's gonna be cut back in order to put a cap on it?
I don't know if it's bent enough so the pipe-
Is it plastic or is that metal?
It's, it's, um, it's plastic, H D P E.
And maybe straighten it out with a hair dryer, heat it up and bring it back to shape?
Maybe, it's a little bigger than a hair dryer, but maybe.
Oh my goodness, gracious. Chain saw, sweep, whack, or some air dryers, we're gonna be all set.
Hey, MacGyver doesn't have anything on us.
I think I get everything. No, my inspection reports, once a year, landfill and transfer station. I have them. I do them. I found the nineteen percent here and not, um-
Do you guys normally send those over, or do we normally send those over?
I do them. I fill them on online, which is not easy.
Yeah.
And then I send them over, or I bring them in and ask Ken to sign them, or
Okay.
I just make Ken sign one, and then Tom will go and submit it. But clearly, I didn't submit nineteen that I sent here. One of them was Aaron Christmas Eve.
Jeez.
Talking to Sue for the transfer station, and then the March twenty-twenty-one's also gotta be signed, so.
Don, do you have to have originally something that, where is that?
Right here. It's my copy, but you-
What's that? In.
I think it's number one on the-
Okay.
And then I'm gonna put Mike's paperwork in here also.
These are just, they're just once a year, these are, this is once a year.
And that's what's called solar, yeah.
Who's?
And the reds.
Got lots of work ahead of us, guys. Ready to go out, we blackened?
So I wanna tell them, I wanna tell them that we're gonna get quotes for the west landfill.
Yes.
And that we'll try to get a cut, you know, certainly before the spring growing season, but this is possible. That I'll be sending them updated notices on landfill operation drafts to take a look at. Closure certification report should be in in the next few days. I'll send you-